9:05, I'd like to call this meeting of the Camaro Eagle Area School District School Board to order. Can we have the roll call?
Cristiano Williams. Michael Eddie.
Here.
Zachary Rukowski.
Here.
Doris Parsons.
Here.
Jane Reed.
Here.
Carla Roy.
Here.
Rocheski.
Rocheski.
We have a quorum. I will continue reading the district commission statement to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Would you all join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. And this hand is approved. Public comment. Do we have anyone here that would like to make a public comment? Hi. Hi's good. We didn't get anything via email, so we will move on to board monitoring. Number one, COVID monitoring.
Um, I really have no real COVID updates. You know, we keep updating dashboard, you know, we have some cases here and there. Numbers, I think, are relatively low right now. Had a little spike after Thanksgiving, which we kind of expected. I really don't have much on COVID right now, honestly. Unless you have questions about anything.
We're still following protocol that you mentioned, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we still are requiring quarantine for exposures outside of the district. We're notifying of exposure within the district, but not requiring quarantine. They kind of say choose to. I've had very, very, very few choose to. I don't know about, have you had any choose to?
Um, in an earlier situation, but not since I was younger.
Not recently. Um, still very minimal evidence of transfer within the building. Most of the transfer has happened in situations outside of the building, families homecoming, things like that. So, yeah. Pretty standard.
Any other questions? Two, DPR report card.
All right, we're not, we can't.
No.
We can't be floating and talking in the back, we're gonna have to come on. Um, so Joel and Kaylee are on their way back to join us. So, we're all gonna kind of chanteen this. Do you have my copy? Do you want me to print me a copy?
You're looking at Pete.
Yeah, yeah, because I have to get my data printed copy. As you do. Of the report card.
Carrie, you want to put it later in the agenda so that they can get back?
No, 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 no. We, they're, they're talking this later on anyway.
Did you print them copies of the report card?
The board member?
We did get it in our email. We got it electronic.
No, it's fine.
I, I have it in the packet. I don't think I printed it.
Okay. All right, so the plan was somewhat to have you walk, kind of walk through your report card with you. We'll kind of wing it since you don't have them in front of you. So, um, things to consider when you're looking at a state report card. Um, the number one thing up there is kind of, not kind of, it is that most important point. Despite what everybody probably did the moment they wrote, it's got on compared to your favorite neighbors. That's really not the intent. Um, it is a score that is extremely unique to the makeup demographic and our district, so they are not meant to compare. Uh, if you look and remember the old hand with the number on it, the state of Wisconsin with the number on it, that's how they used to look. They've kind of taken that away. I think the state is trying to consciously get that idea of comparison out of your head. That's really not what they're meant for. Um, they're released in November, but keep in mind, it's all based on data past year. So enrollment, all the demographic percentages are not this year, they're last year, end of year back. I think that's something important to keep in your head. Um, they are extremely complicated math, most of which, I'm gonna be honest, I could not begin to explain to Todd the math guy maybe. He could. But really, they're looking at achievement scores, they're looking at growth, they're looking at attendance and graduation, and then target groups. We're gonna talk about all four of those um, over a three-year time span. Um, the state has done a good job in also kind of taking what could be natural barriers out of it. So, for example, sixth grade. Most of sixth grade data occurred in fifth grade, fourth grade, and third grade. So, most of their score actually is on the EES report card. So, there's, there's factoring for changes in building, there's even factoring for leaving a district. So, kids who left our district this year, their scores from last year and the year before are still impacting us, and then moving forward will impact other districts. So, they really have kind of cleaned up some of those things. The other thing to remember is nothing from the 1920 school year, we call the dissolution year, the COVID year, whatever you want to think about it, none of that data is included in any report card in any way. Um, we didn't do most state assessments. The couple that we did do, that data is not pulled over, attendance data is not pulled over. Um, they do look at graduation, but again, that, that would really be it. So, this is a really wrong presentation, and I don't want to read to you, but I think there's some interesting points in demographics. The first one that popped up to me right away is the change in total enrollment. Um, from what is the 18, 19 school year to what was 2021, obviously a significant change in enrollment. We all know some of the reasons why, but long and short of it is, I'm graduating classes of 60 to 70, and we're bringing in classes of 40, you're gonna have a downturn in enrollment. I think the other one that pops up to me when I look at this is the increase in economically disadvantaged. So economically disadvantaged, we went from 31.5 to 38.3. Keep in mind, this is district data. You get these percentile breakdowns for each building as well. Um, so Eagles economically disadvantaged is actually over 40, um, and a couple of them are obviously likely to get us at 38.
What, um, what exactly qualifies as economically disadvantaged?
It's, it's all based on free and reduced lunch.
That's it.
As far as I know. Tom, do you know any difference? Economically disadvantaged is based on free and reduced lunch qualification. So, so remember, um, free and reduced lunch can happen two ways. You can be direct certified, or you fill out the paperwork, and then qualify either for free, or we do it based on factor, income factors and things like that. Um, so thinking about the big bull circles as you look at them, um, you know, the, the scores kind of are what they are. We also put in the chart so you can see the cut scores. Um, yes, the district misses the exceed expectations by point eight of a point. If you look back, the cut scores are different than they were two years ago, um, so if you looked at them from two years ago, the cut scores are down a little bit. Um, but then EES at a 40, or 74.3 exceeds the middle school at 54.1, meets Q, and then overall score, or sorry, the high school at a 78.2. Um, there's obviously middle school score, I might, I might not gonna hide it from it, we're gonna talk as we go through about some reasons or some things we're going to look at with the middle school score, but those are kind of the accountability rating overall as you see them. Okay, so priority weights. So, the district report card is complicated math with the exception, in my opinion, of how these scores are calculated. So, these scores are calculated by taking your priority weight. So, as you look at us as a district, achievement only makes up 22.8% of our overall score, where growth makes up 27.2. So, as a district, growth gives up more points than achievement. That make sense? So, you literally just take the score times the percent, and you add all four of them together, and that's how you would get a 69.2. So, as we go through, we'll show you the score for each of those four priority areas, and then it's really just basic math as you do that part. Um, totally even district would be 25%, obviously across the board. If you look at some of our neighbors who have a lower economically disadvantaged, you may see something like 35% is actually based on achievement. So, the, and basing this, the way I understand it, the higher your economically disadvantaged, the more points are allocated towards growth on your report card. That make sense? Okay. Achievement. So, we're gonna walk through all four areas a little bit. I'm gonna start about achievement. So, achievement basically looks at performance on state report cards. Um, on a state test. Keep in mind, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, that's forward test. Uh, ninth and 10th is AZT Aspire, 11th is AZT. Only in the area of math and ELA. We do tests in science, and we do tests in social studies, but those scores never factor into state report card. There also is kind of priority weighting for years. So, your current year, which would be, remember last year for us, has the highest weight, then prior year and third year. The other complicated thing about this year is there's no prior year, remember 18, 19, 20 doesn't exist. So, there's a higher weight on this year and this year's state report card than in previous years as far as calculating achievement score. As a district, all these scores are at 100, so our achievement score is a 58.2. I love that you're not supposed to care, but they put this really nice graph in there comparing the other districts, how you compare to other districts in the state. But it is helpful data, so that puts us the same or better than about 31% of the schools in the state in achievement. So, if you take this 58.2, multiply by that 22.8, that's the number you're gonna add together to eventually get 69.2. All right, Katie, can you tell me a little bit about each building?
Um, so these graphs were taken directly from the state report card, and they're gonna demonstrate over a succession of, of the years they're taken into accountability, with the exception of the 1920 year. So, as a district, um, you're gonna notice that a lot of our areas have fluctuated significantly depending on the area that we're looking at. What that sort of signals to us as a leadership team is that we, when we start to dive into this data and really look at what are the action steps going forward, we're gonna be looking at the systems that are in place. We're gonna be looking at how we're applying some of our curricular things on a macro level as well, you know, structurally, how we're be, you know, analyzing our day, how we instructing students, and then all the way down to teacher retention, teacher training, so that as a district, we can move these numbers in a different direction. When you break it down by school, um, I am gonna point out Eagle Elementary, this data does encompass Palmyra Elementary as well. Um, they've added that data in historically, so that now it's just one score going forward, so this is reflective of both populations. Um, one of the biggest hopeful indicators for growth is actually that we see a lot of fluctuation in that yellow group. So, that yellow group is often what we call in education, the bubble group. So, those students who have a very high potential to be moving forward with the correct instruction and correct tools and consistency of learning. So, I often say that a market good educator isn't, isn't what we can do with the kids that are already there, and isn't what we can do with kiddos that are in need of additional services, and those kiddos who are in the middle that have the biggest potential to realize. So, seeing that Eagle Elementary does have a larger yellow area, that's gonna be something that we're gonna hopefully put some processes in place to shift some of those numbers into the purple for proficient and eventually that blue. Now, the middle school score is what the middle school score is when we look at it holistically, but something that I really wanted to point out here is, even though we've seen a little bit of a downtrend, when you look back to the 17, 18 year, we're still up where we were three years ago. So, that year prior going into the 1920 year that they didn't take into account, we've still shown growth over those three years. So, through a transition and dissolution and through a pandemic, they've still actually shown an increase in skills all across the board. We've managed to, um, you know, shrink some of those yellow areas, increase some of those purple areas, and so that's good to know that even, even coming from the entry to the middle school over that three-year time span, we've seen an increase. The high school, same can be said in terms of really focusing on that yellow group, that middle group that we're gonna push towards, towards for proficiency, and we're going to take the same approach that we would at the elementary level and the middle school level, talking about our systems, our curriculums, and our structures to make sure that those numbers can be moved. And then some of those takeaways from achieving. Yes, there is an increase in below basics scores. Um, the one thing that really, really hurts us with below basics scores is they count as zero in that calculation of points. So, even taking those below basic kiddos and focusing in to move them up to that next category, we'll see a significant increase in gains, because right now, it's like they didn't even take the test. It's just like a negative mark against us. Um, we have seen an increase in proficient scores over three years, and right now, our data really does reflect roughly a third of the students who are basic, a few, a third of the students who are below that basic, and about a third of the students that fall in that pressure for advanced category. Um, which we feel at this time is pretty reflective of our demographic of our school district, and so we had a couple of discussions at prior committee meetings about changing our culture shift towards increased emphasis on pride in learning and pride in outcomes of, of assessments. Keep in mind, this is a test that took once a year, it took it last spring, um, and as a district, we are now 38% positive, which is more than the state average of roughly 34. All right.
So, growth. So, growth is one of the number, we're getting more points for growth. So, why, you may look at that as achievement and say, oh, 53, that's not fantastic. Wouldn't really love to see that growth score pushing 70. Um, it really does show us, we're right kind of in the middle of 50%, we are, our kids are growing at more faster than 50% of the schools in the state. Um, if you look at ELA and math, they're really pretty close. Uh, so like, remember curriculum policies before, I, I can't look at it and say it's a math problem. I don't look at it and say it's an ELA problem. It really, each level is growing the same, each level is achieving pretty similar as well. So, again, a lot of times you can use this report card to target certain things you need to improve, and you're gonna kind of see across the board, our target is really kind of just that, that tier one instruction and what we're doing for all kids, which is good and which is not good. So, complicated math. So, the idea of value added, I'm gonna explain this to the best I can. These guys say I make it make sense. So, the red dot on the dash line is your kid in third grade. Your kid in third grade comes to school most days and does most of the work and is kind of there, and they, the state will tell you at a minimum, they should become that white circle. So, just by living and breathing and being children in the world, there's a certain amount of growth a child will achieve. But when your kid takes the test, they become that second red dot. So, the difference between all this, what the world describes as value added, so I look at that as, that's what our teachers are bringing to the table, that's our curriculum, that's our environment, that's our schedule, that's our SCL. That's all those things you're doing that have the bank for your buck. So, obviously, you want a higher value added score. So, you don't have your report card in front of you. Um, but when you look at it, there is a sheet that's got all kinds of stuff on it, it's got numbers that go all over the place. What you want is a value added score around three. And what you will see is that the high school has a really high value added score, telling you that they're achieving a lot of growth, those things we're doing aren't working. Eagle has a value added score right where we want it to be, so they're doing a great job, but maybe we can do some more. And the middle school value added score is relatively low. So, what we learned is basically our middle school kids are the ones that, they're not necessarily going backwards, but they're just kind of saying. So, they're not growing, those things we're doing in value added aren't connecting with those kids, and we need to look at what we can do to get them to move forward. Jody.
All right, so those factors of what we can do to move kids forward. John Hattie is an educational researcher, and he has done studies on millions of kids on what are the factors that influence student achievement. And he has created a list, and the factors are known, they qualify under effect sizes. So, the top four effect sizes on student achievement are as follows. So, teacher estimates of achievement, and that's just simply the teachers believe that the students can achieve, that they are able to do the work, and they're going to be developing those relationships and that will mean that. The second one is collective teacher efficacy, belief of teachers in their own ability to positively affect teachers. They believe they know the subject matter, they know how to adequately teach. Um, the third one is student expectations or self-reported grades. The teacher is finding out what are the students' expectations, what do they want to do. This is the students who are gold studying, and the teacher is working alongside of them to set those growth goals, pushing them, the students, beyond what their expectations are. And the fourth one is structured learning outcomes, also known as PGE programs, and these are giving learning opportunities to students based on what their developmental level is, where they are. So, matching their learning style to what the teaching opportunities are.
So, takeaways from growth I kind of talked about, um, it's page five on the state report card that talks about each building and how they're doing. Um, so in a positive spin, we know the middle school has the greatest area to grow. Um, that's, you know, one of those targets, looking at some of those things, we'll be, we're looking at data, um, will be trying to figure out how to get those middle school kids to grow. And then we are seeing a tremendous amount of growth in the high school. Uh, high school has a really high growth score, I think like better or equal to like 93% of the schools in the state. Um, so keep it in mind, if we can get more growth in the middle school, it may shrink down that ability for growth in the high school. Um, so we want to try and get kind of equal growth across all three buildings. You love it? No, this is Z score. I made Fish explain the Z score to me. Tom, do you know what a Z score is?
I probably do.
So, I didn't understand the Z score, and so I made Fish teach it to me, and that's where else. So, target group. So, target group is basically taking the bottom 25% of kids, and if it forms a group of more than 20 kids, they get like their own mini report card. So, Fish explained the Z score to me as basically you can compare two pieces of data that are not equal. So, she used SAT and ACT. Those numbers don't make the same thing. One's 1,500, the other's 36. But if you use a Z score, you can put them on a bell curve and get them to speak to each other. So, what the state does is they use a Z score because, given years in forward testing, even though it's the same test, the cut scores are all over the place. I would bet cut scores from this last year for proficient, basic, all that look significantly different than two years ago. Or if you're a ninth grader and you not take ACT Aspire and you took forward, they're able to make them talk to each other. So, if you have kids that compared to all the other kids that took a test, they fall in the bottom 25%, they start to form a target group. If you have more than 20 kids, you end up with their own little report card. So, how are they achieving, how are they growing, how are they attending? If you look at Eagle's report cards, they don't have a target group. You think about the data, it makes sense. Third grade is first year they test. They don't have another year to compare to. Our fourth graders, again, only third graders last year, and our, our fifth graders, they take fourth year test. We only have really one year's worth of data because they didn't have any, no test. Also, keep in mind, the most you could ever have is two. So, you may not, never have, I mean, in a perfect world, you wouldn't have more than 25, 20 kids falling below 25%. So, depending on kind of how testing goes, Eagle may not end up with a target group, but the high school and the district and PES, or sorry, and PMS have a target group. So, they, they get their own kind of mini report card. So, when you look at the target group section, this is what you see. So, again, a really nice priority score for this group of kids, and what jumps out to me right away is their, their growth numbers are great. Um, they're above our other kids in ELA and, and not a ton below in math. Um, so again, they're great. Their achievement is low, but they only get in the group because their achievement is low. So, if their achievement wasn't low, they wouldn't qualify for being part of the target group. Uh, target group, again, more, better or more than 85% of the kids in the state. This is really early schools in the state, really you like to figure out who are you missing? Are you missing, I specialize as a kid, are you missing your EOP kids, are you missing your minority kids? Again, our sample sizes are small, um, but again, those kids really are making good growth. We are actually physically able to see who these kids are. Um, we can identify them by name and know who they are when we look at our data. So, it's really helpful when we're trying to figure out, you know, what's going on in a different class or a different level, we can look at kids and see who they are, what other services they're receiving, what can we do to help them forward and achieve at a higher level. So, takeaway, again, they're growing at a really nice rate, which is good. We want to see growth. Remember, we get more, more emphasis on growth anyway. Um, achievement is behind, as we said. They also have a higher rate of attendance, chronic attendance, absenteeism, that probably doesn't surprise anybody, kids who don't come to school, don't tend to do as well in school, it's kind of a natural connection. Um, target groups, present. Kaylee, you gonna talk about untracked graduation?
Um, sure. Untracked graduation, um, looking at our scores, uh, we actually are pretty good with graduation rates, something to kind of keep in mind with graduation rates, that if a student is in like a more significant disability, like one of Sarah Rivers' kids, that may stay until they're 21, they count as a non-grad. So, this year we did have, for this last year, we did have two students that kind of followed a gap, so when you're looking at our sample size of seniors, two of them. So, um, kind of taking out that factor and looking at it overall, we do have a very high graduation rate. We have here a few students that don't graduate.
Third grade English, language arts, and eighth grade math are used in buildings that don't graduate. Somewhere along the way, historically, those are good indicators of whether a kid graduates or not.
So, they use those scores to help predict.
Yes.
Graduation rates.
Um, absenteeism is relatively good, um, you know, better than the state again, but again, those kids that don't attend are often the kids in your target group and are, is not, not achieving.
Uh, so next steps. So, we kind of broke it up district by, and then my building, so what is it that we're doing next based on all of this information? So, one of the big things that we're doing, Carrie has been in contact with Ed O'Connor, works for CISA, who's kind of a statistics guru and works on all of, um, state report cards and kind of analyzing all that data. So, we're meeting with him January 26th, January 26th to do a, like a full deep dive into our data, looking at all of these scores, our ACT are forward, all our fast bridge, to really try to find where our gaps actually are. We can look at it and see that we have some tier one whole classroom things that we need to look at, some probably some curriculum, things like that, but we want to really analyze the data to know exactly where we need to pinpoint where our weaknesses are, so we know the proper action to take, so we're not just throw it, throw in ideas that something is not actually our problem, or it's the main problem. So, we will be doing that. Um, we're doing a huge focus on our tier one instruction to help bring up that middle group of kids. Uh, so Todd has been a strong supporter of AVID program that was, uh, used in one of his previous districts, that really has a program that works on kind of teaching strategies and helping kids with self-motivation, trying to find out more intrinsic, uh, you know, ways to get kids to want to learn and take ownership of their learning, study skills, note-taking skills, kind of learning all of that, and it's a way for teachers to kind of incorporate that into their general curriculum. So, we are going, we are in contact with Lock, Chester, Lucas here, we're gonna go and do a, um, site visit and see it in action, because really, I think Jody has some experience with it, but the rest of us have none. So, that is something we want to look at. Um, our fifth through eighth, or fifth grade through eighth grade, we're gonna be doing some reading and writing workshop trainings, which is our main curriculum for reading and writing down at elementary school. We just had a lot of new staff and a lot of turnover, so a lot of our staff haven't been properly trained on it. So, we're working on that. Another big one that we, um, found that we needed to do is that we have a lot of different resources within our building, so a lot of different curriculum pieces. We don't have just a flat inventory of what all we have. So, that's gonna be a big project that we're doing is getting all of that inventory to know exactly what resources we have in house already, to find out what we can be utilizing better. Focus on teacher retention. I mean, we all know that teacher retention has been an issue for us in the last few years. You know, we've had a pretty high staff turnover, given circumstances. Um, so we are working with HR committee, Todd's been working really hard at trying to get, um, an evaluation of our salary and benefits to look at kind of that pay scale, um, increase of professional development opportunities, that's kind of been on hold through the last few years with the pandemic, so trying to get teachers out at some of these conferences and get these trainings going again. Um, and our SCL committee is really focusing on having a positive school culture and building that district wide. We are into our new evaluation system, our EP system for how we are evaluating our teachers, so it's different from what we used last year. Um, this new system incorporates a couple of different things that weren't, um, involved previously, such as every teacher has to give a survey out to all their students and have them kind of assess their skills and where, where like their strengths and weaknesses are, which kind of gives them really great insight, because we can pop in and see snapshots of teaching, but kids are there every single day. So, they, they know what works and what doesn't work, so, um, that gives us a lot, and we don't see those, teachers do, teachers analyze them and find out what area they need to work on and tell us what those focus areas are for us to go and evaluate. It also incorporates, um, more observations, so we're in there more often. Um, so we've been working really hard on getting us trained on doing that, and getting the staff all set to get all their paperwork in. Um, and then just, you know, coming up with a plan to best utilize some of our staff expertise. So, we do have staff that have, you know, strengths in different areas and just trying to utilize that, get more activities going for the kids, getting them involved in more things. Um, looking at building wide.
Okay, you talk, honey.
Sure. It's pretty similar, both, both buildings.
Yeah, sorry, I gotta read, I can't read on screen that close. All right, so, um, we, as a school, so kind of going back to that, we don't have a target group according to the state report card, that doesn't mean that we're not focusing in. That doesn't mean that we're not focusing in on those small groups that need extra attention. Um, we just do it in a different avenue, which is we sit down, um, when we do our fast bridge assessments. Um, we sit down with every single team, we go over results, we just, we figure out what kids are gonna be moving into intervention, what kids are moving out of intervention, um, what needs to change their scheduling. And so those happen as an entire district team, um, every time that we take fast bridge. So when we take the fast bridge again, right when we come back from break, we'll sit down as soon as it's over and have that same process again going into our second trimester here. So that will continue. Um, we're working on in-service training for intervention programs. Um, I know Kaylee's been sending a couple of her teachers to some different trainings to help kids, um, or help teachers, help students through some of the programs that we use to get things rolling. And then, um, we're definitely using increased collaboration within special education staff to meet the student needs. So I know Kaylee's been working with her staff and talking how things can happen. And then we've also been creative in how we're having special education aides help in a classroom to service students who are both on a case load and on a radar at the same time. Um, collaboration in classroom observations from the CNI coordinator. So we're talking about, um, we're, we're sitting down together, Jody's sitting down, talking about some of those pieces that sort of fall by the wayside, particularly assessment. So not just jumping into teaching, but actually using pre-assessments and having teachers know that there are pre-assessments that exist, exists, and we can use those to actually inform instruction. One thing that we're trying to change as a culture shift is we're not teaching the curriculum, we're teaching students. Um, and that's not always an easy shift to make. So, um, it's common practice when you're, you're getting your footing in a new curriculum or a new district or a newer, newer in your career, to really wanna take that book and go cover to cover because that's what you need to teach that year. And so we're working on collaborating with teachers to slow that down and understand that we need to figure out what the students in front of you need because they may not need that cover to cover. And we only have a hundred and eighty precious days and I don't wanna waste any on a cover to cover piece of paper that we may not need to use a few of those pieces of. So that's been a different shift for a lot of our staff to sit down and think about. Um, Kaylee and I will sit down, we'll talk about different EBC meetings. Um, those can include a variety of people, whether that's parents, classroom teachers, um, support individuals. We have seen, um, emotional, um, needs and mental health needs absolutely skyrocket. Um, I think we may have had four of these last week.
I think we've had six or seven in the last two weeks, initial ones. Just trying to get parents in, trying to get the communication going, get the plans going for these kids that don't already have a formal plan.
And the, and the extreme needs and things that we're really trying to, to meet kiddo. So we're really rocking with that process and running it through to make sure that we're supporting kids throughout the, um, the process of learning and being in school. And then lastly, purchasing the second step program, um, which is an updated digital program for SEL. Uh, we also have our school counselor going in and doing some health and nutrition lessons and blending those together to make it something that improves soon that comes.
Uh, middle school, high school, we, I've always had flex time, or I had flex time for a long time at the high school level. Everybody loves it. We have not, had been able to come up with a creative way to get some of that access to middle school. So I thank depleted Mary and Luke and Amy and Scott to be willing to give up their kids potentially a day of work, a week to be pulled and, and get some extra help and reteaching. Um, I think so far, everybody's really is seeing some benefits of that. We'll continue to talk about that. I begged them to give me nine weeks and try, um, and so far they're collecting kids and that seems to be working. Um, we did purchase, as we talked about, finance school connect, which is SEL, um, guidance character, whatever word you wanna utilize, curriculum that will be utilized, middle school for sure, um, starting second semester, we're doing some training. And then Christine, Rocco, my counselor will be going in and doing some guidance lessons and working with teachers and doing some of that.
And we do have someone, um, one of the two people that created the curriculum is coming during our in-service to do a whole district-wide SEL presentation and then do a deeper guide for just the middle school teachers on the curriculum, doing a, a sample lesson and showing content.
Uh, middle school guidance is something, like guidance lessons is something that's definitely been missed up here all along. Over six grade up here is something I think we really need to focus on and get back. So we're excited about that. Um, in addition to the flex time, I've been able to establish two days a week where my middle school core teachers, so English, math, science, social studies are meeting. Um, one meeting they talk about academics, data, and the second meeting where we talk about culture and climate and rewards and things like that. Uh, Tuesday, Thursday, seventeenth, we're having our first kind of PBIS assembly kickoff. Um, they decided positivity was the trait of December, so we're gonna recognize some kids. Um, started talking about kind of how we're gonna do some my gratitude, just trying to get some of that positive recognition back into the middle school environment. Um, high school will start meeting in similar groups after winter break. We'll get those guys together either by, by department or by kind of grade level band or work and kind of which format that will take. Um, same thing is happening up here with special ed. Teachers and parents are meeting once a week. Talk about kids, talk about needs, talk about schedules, all of that, which is important. And then again, the same thing with Jody. Um, she meets with several teachers and we have some high needs teachers that are meeting with her weekly. Um, we're also utilizing an outside coaching, volunteer coaching resource to work with some of our teachers, um, as far as getting that instruction up where it needs to be. Um, that is, I did put in questions prior. So that was, I don't know how long ago, twenty minutes of a lot of talking and a lot of, of information. Um, I don't know, in advance of anyone looking, handle questions, if anybody has questions. We didn't, we did not include Joel, we didn't think he'd be, we thought he'd still be in Eagle, so we didn't leave him out by any means. He was with us for all of it. Um, he can answer all the questions if you want. Yeah, there you go. Any, anybody have questions? They're all looking at me entirely. We did do a little space TV for CNT, so they had some questions. They kind of helped us answer out. Um, they wanted more detail, um, and Pratia obviously later, on kind of next step. So hopefully we expanded that out enough that you can see it's not all clouded down the way. You know, we'll be able to utilize some of the fast bridge data right away in January to get down to some skills. It's a thing we can start doing here and there in class to get kids kind of where close to a little gap we're seeing.
I'm impressed that it does seem like you've already talked, because you guys are well down the road of already taking the numbers, internalizing and going ahead with goals. And I think that's important because you only have kids for so long. And the fact you're already doing it, I love that you're going to visit Markashad, Todd has been bringing that for a while. I'm eager to hear, um, I don't know how fast we can bring it in once you've visited, but it's something we gotta purchase or whatever it is, let us know. But it's something that I think having a program and bringing it in, in addition to an already awesome school environment that you guys create because you do know the kids, you do know the names of the kids. I just think that's something that we do that nobody, other schools can, that are people size. But I just think it pays off tonight. I'm really impressed. I know that we had a little lower numbers in one area, but I think the thought and the thought process behind this is, is very impressive.
Yeah, it's not, it's not more of the same, it's a repeat, oh, we don't know what we're gonna do. You just need some proactive measures to go after different things when you use the data.
Yeah, and that's the most important thing. We wanna figure out where, where to put the resources and, and the money before we just make the choice.
I think that's what's obvious is you come through to say, okay, this is where we're at, this is why we're at, this is where we wanna go. When you come to the board then and say, hey, we do want to increase teacher salaries to increase retention because this is gonna help our kids, it makes way more sense to us. So very appreciative of that. It's not like just getting with EK, oh, here's your report card, this explains it.
And a little bit of what it means and how we get to that.
Yeah, yeah, and where we're going.
Cause I learned quite a bit while doing this, it was a good idea.
Like growth theory was interesting. That was very, I didn't know in person, but the words up there and I'm like, what did it say?
That's the one thing that I'm particularly really impressed with is how much our children are growing within our district. And I also think it's going to be very interesting to see our movement of sixth grade to the middle school and how that impacts the dynamics of the entire school district. Because we have nothing to assess that situation. But as I said, it's pretty human, um, seeing I, I, the one thing that I see when I'm regularly in our schools, these are all well and good, they're important factors, but to me, I see kids that are happy. I see kids that feel safe and kids that feel secure within our walls. And to me, as a board member, that's, and as a parent, that's as important as how they're doing on a one-day trust.
And I think you see a little bit of that in attendance. Um, I think you see a little bit of that reflected in, in graduation, but that's not something that's easily measured in this type of data, for sure.
I also did not realize that those students that could stay till they're twenty-one impacted our graduation.
They eventually don't, but they, cause it's looked at in a four and seven year cycle, but it will take till year seven for those kids to do that. And, and the other part of it is, from what I understand, an actual dropout also continues to impact you for that, that seven-year span as well, um, which we talked about. As far as the, the special needs kids, that's not really fair.
But then staying and getting transition skills is far more important than that.
Absolutely.
How are the kids? I know I've heard around a lot of middle school children these days. Um, and, and I have been made aware of a lot of these things that you guys have been doing. Not really knowing, but I've been hearing rumblings, oh, so-and-so is flexing into this.
Yeah.
Um, my classmates were here, whatever. So I, I, I know that you've been doing it.
Yeah.
And that there've been people observing classrooms and things like that. Um, and the feedback that I've gotten from the kids has been positive. They have looked at it as a, as a bad thing, which tells me a lot right there. Um, so I was just wondering, like, overall, is, is that kind of a consensus you're raising?
I think Mary would know, maybe probably Markashad's with them. But I think across the board, one of the biggest challenges with a middle school child is they need time to get help. But when I put a study hall in their schedule, it is forty-five minutes of chaos that no one wants to manage. So trying to find a way, and like I said, the FIAD teachers and MUD teachers were extremely gracious and said, do what you have to do. Very actually, when they were utilizing as well as like some kids and have Luke take off FIAD kids. So trying to get some value, you know, one of the struggles is that value to do work. And they don't wanna miss FIAD and maybe they don't wanna miss MUD. So they're, I think their defensive increase that way as well. Um, and I think it's allowed for them to get some help that they need. It's also a lot of time for the staff to have conversations that we haven't had time to have, um, which is important. Teaching is an extremely isolating profession and it wouldn't seem like it is to all these human beings around you. But you're, you're very isolated, um, day in and day out. And we need to find some time for them to have some more professional conversation up here. I think it happens more in Eagle probably just because the scheduling and special things. But in the high school for sure, I mean, they, they, they spend a lot of their day just talking to children, you know?
I mean, that's my huge takeaway of the shift in my position is now that I'm down there much, where I see, and being, teaching in my classroom for seventy-two years, how isolated I was, that I didn't get to have that collegial aspect of it. I think now that we have two classrooms at each grade level, that ability of those two to work together is gonna just help exponentially as those kids get resources needed. You're stronger, you know, not that they definitely switch who they have for math, but like they can ask the neighbor teacher, like, well, how do you do this concept of dividing fractions or whatever? Get kids to understand. So it's huge in that sense of having some collegiality, improve and use those skills. And I think it's gonna help with retention as well. Cause you have to have people in the building you care about. First of all, I just shut my door and teach them, you know?
And the beauty of that, within the elementary level, their scheduling is set up so they have common work that will plan in time. And up here, the middle school, that flex time is really allowed like those two days. So even talking with a middle school teacher last week, um, one of her academics, she goes, wow, I, I need so much more knowledge in the two weeks that we've been meeting by talking to other teachers than ever before. So we're talking about strategies and things that the child with students coming back and saying, how did that go? What did you wanna try next? In addition to the support that the kids are getting, um, the other days during that flex time, it's also an opportunity for to pull it rich for proof. So I'm pulling kids to Papeka Math Week in January. So I can work with them on that as well.
Heard that, my daughter's just like, oh, that, that, that new, that new person, she's really nice.
Well, I'm looking forward to next year this time. If you guys come back and look at those numbers, they're like skyrocketing.
And aside out, the fourth, fifth grade concert was wonderful times. Like probably the best that I've been to.
Yes, I, I promise next year it will not be on the, the night.
December had too many days. But it was, well done.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Hey, and the technology works.
Yeah, yeah, actually.
Actually, I would prefer that.
No, it's great, thank you.
Free postseason sports recap. I believe we're gonna get that for emergency. Our person, Caitlin.
So we, I reached out to Kevin and asked him to give a recap. Um, he would prefer to be here, but he promised himself he would be at his first day, but he wanted that at basketball coach. He's hoping that is. The two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, school year will forever be remembered as the year of hope. The two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year will be remembered as we had fewer athletics and we're here with the student highly kid. We knew with four years ago that our current senior class had a low number of current students. So we were excited about the success and the large number of athletes in the grade behind them. When over ten monthly sports athletes from that class were gone, decided to leave and fear the school would close. We knew the day would come that we would have to play freshman and sophomore varsity level and that day is here. Despite the tough fall weekend and the lies ahead the rest of the school year, our coaches continue to work hard to build successful programs. When evaluating our fall sport season, we came away with two positive outcomes. First and foremost, our kids did quick. Typically, when things don't go well, you will see a drop in numbers. I think the opposite will happen and our participation numbers will actually be higher next year because of the coaches we have. The other is that after hiring five new head coaches in the fall, the program has found that they all have several kids in that. First, they all seem excited for the future and intend to stay for the long term. Secondly, they are knowledgeable and enthusiastic and committed to building programs that will lead us out of the year and year. They like us on to specifically talk about all the sports. So for football, while the young teams struggled during the season, their dedication has not wavered. Coach Kaufman has the weight room open at the school every day, has brought in three additional coaches to prepare for next year, and has been actively recruiting more players within the school. Last year, we had twenty-nine players from grades nine to twelve, and next year, it is just waiting over four. If that happens, they will be able to have a separate JV and a separate varsity team. For volleyball, in volleyball, Coach Chine had three teams, varsity, JV one, and JV two this past year. He will continue to run open gyms, team camps, and a summer league. He has actively been involved with our middle school program and the thirty-two players that participated in our seventh complete third teams this past season. Cross country, in cross country, Coach Alfred and Coach Wild, after being hired only one month before the season started, were able to double the size of the roster. With only three boys and one girl returning, they quickly pumped four new runners on the boys side, so they were able to post a team sport every week. With very little experience and preseason training, they were able to finish in fourth place with their team, Team Joe's half. We also had four middle school runners who got their first experience running and have a lot of potential. I know James will continue to build this program as gets done with our track team, as Brandon moves on to be an assistant on the football coaching squad. Cheer. Some would say you save best for last. We are very fortunate to have someone with a resume of Savannah Serbit, or, yeah, leading our cheer group. Savannah is a PE graduate, member of a national championship cheer team, a good WU player, and a former NFL cheerleader with the tennis Titans. Savannah is both patient and positive, but also has high expectations for her team. Savannah is another coach that has expanded her program by adding middle school students. With only six high school cheerleaders this year, the additional nine middle schoolers made up for a very loud and impressive group to run before. He then adds a few final thoughts. Um, he wants to thank Michael Eddy for getting the ASP committee servant and Brad Patrick for numerous hours of work on ASP fields. They are looking at the possibility of dugouts of both fields by the start of next season. They are also currently looking at generating additional revenue through advertising. Brad and Stephanie Butler have generated a list of possible doors. They are also looking at signage for all of our athletic venues. He has also had two official talks with two staff members to reboot the forensics and drama clubs. He has followed meetings this week after gathering more information. Most gorgeous name of production this year.
Excellent. I should stop all of that. I appreciate all of the stuff.
Okay, committee reports. Public relations met on November seventeenth.
Tara?
Um, so we covered, we covered a little bit of everything. Um, Kaitlyn and Katie are working on giving out a quarterly newsletter. The first one, it's a fifty mill now, just before Christmas break, that's still, I don't know.
Yes, yes.
So it's still good to go. Um, yeah, so many good things to put in there, so I'm excited to see that. It should be very full of awesomeness. Um, we also talked about the, the website updates. Okay, we did some work, adding some new photos, programs, just that's kind of the whole updating part process there. So Kaitlyn, her playwork to do there, um, I have my sympathy mail, says, hey, I noticed this, can you fix this? She's really probably getting that website. She's really complicated in that website." I appreciate that. There was some spotlight that Kaitlyn did on foreign exchange students. I got some really good feedback from my daughter on that, she thought that was really interesting. Maybe she had to attend when we did.
Oh, that was their presentation?
Yeah, their presentation. She came back and says, "I want to go to Kazakhstan where the whole is from." I'm like, "Okay." So that was interesting. We also talked about, we get all the work at Santa Process Fields, and the awesome program with the LS paper library of the snowshoes that have been purchased and can be made available for use from the students and staff there this winter. So, although it's snowing, they can actually utilize those, those are exciting. And then Katie was also going to, into going forward with the step program, which was the senior tax exemption program that we had talked about a while back. I kind of got pushed away, so I thought I would make that, everything up. Right, so Katie was going to take care of taking a lean on that program, seeing if we can get that going. You know, gather indoor facilities used, we promote it, so we have walk halls and offices and all, actively taking advantage of the opportunity to walk indoors. So that's great. And then we discussed our next PR starters. Kevin, this will be celebrating with us with the process skills and people behind that. That was pretty much just.
It was a lot, huh?
I thought the PR meetings, because there's just so much good stuff to talk about. Why let those meetings go live?
I know. All right, thanks Tara. HR, Jean, also met November 17.
Yep, November 17. We've got an update on the salary structure, Shelley. Thomas has done a lot of work creating a worksheet of the current employees', current salary levels to demonstrate where we are at this current time. And then she got that information ready to pass to Todd. Todd, this didn't happen immediately, but I guess subsequent, Todd has brought in a software that'll help assist that, so that'll people who miss ahead. An update on the substitute teachers, Kay, Bill Ray, Shelley did a great job of sharing information on the history of what we paid our substitute teachers and the strong need to immediately do something because we are trailing behind. And even though teachers kind of want to work in our district because they're so awesome, they are going to eventually going to have to go somewhere if they don't get something comparable. So we quickly sent that to Todd, to Brad, to be able to make a recommendation, and I believe we're going on something tonight. Then, and last was just the current status in the business office, some of the restructuring, some of the training that's been going on, ongoing to get some of our newer staff numbers up to speed, and everything seems to be going along well there. So that's it.
Student premium policy, Cristiano's not able to be here tonight, but Zach and Lindsay anything updates from that meeting?
Basically, mostly me to talk about the report card.
A less good portion of it.
Yeah.
No, not really. Jo to give an update on some fast bridge data stuff, and that was really about all we talked about.
Yeah, I think it was pretty much just report card.
Which is important on a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Imagine that kind of taking a whole meeting. Buildings and Browns met tonight.
Yep. I'll try and speak quickly through this, quite a number of items we went through. We talked about the update on the food service. Our staffing seems to be really good. We were playing the bar line, second semester seems to be on track. And also, there was a survey about interest in having a breakfast bar. There's a significant response on the positive side, so we're looking at moving that forward as well. We needed a roof estimate for high school, we're waiting on CCS from that, that hasn't happened yet. There's been some repair to the Eagle Elementary Roof, and then we need to come back and do some more cotton over the Christmas holiday. Lighting installation, all the outsides are done, they're going to come back and do the insides over Christmas as well. That has to be done by the end of the year. We did receive some points for the bathrooms, we're going to be passing that around. Find us a scope of work and content, in addition, find at least maybe one more vendor that might provide a quote. There was an initiative to turn the stall doors around in the girls' bathroom here by the community room, which is complete, but we're going to now push that forward and try and turn around all stall doors regardless of gender and vocation. So Brad's committed to making that happen. So we did have Santa Process was interested in possibly utilizing some of Palmyra Elementary, but they since stepped away and decided to take a different path. We talked about possibly moving the Quay Park, but we want to keep it going, but we're not going to move it. We talked quite a while about moving the Gaga ball pit from EES to EES. We actually had the Eagle scout that created that here, provides some comment. So our next steps there is to research what spots might be. Ryan presented quite a bit of information regarding the PA system at Eagle Elementary. We gave, provided him some direction on initial steps and some replacement schedule moving forward, so that's going to be continued in the conversation. He also talked about, oh, that was the PA system, sorry, that was the security cameras. The PA system, very outdated, 20 years, technology's no longer available, could really cause problems moving forward. We're going to talk to the administration and see if we can use us for funds to help fund that. We talked about cameras, we talked about some of the parking lot items regarding showers, we need to get a little bit more detail as to what, where, how. I think, I think that was it. Oh, yeah, so regarding the, providing, so, that's it? Got a lot of scribbles in my last draft. It's terrible, I can't facilitate and take notes at the same time, so that's it.
Thank you, Michael. Finance committee met tonight, Lindsay?
The finance committee did meet, we, I, and I wasn't fielding, but you had some questions regarding budget variances and a couple of vouchers, and we did receive clarification. There was an extra bus added to the EES shuttle route. We get 70 to 72 children riding one bus, and so there was some shifting, and we talked about if that was included in our budget, we needed to realign a few things. We also had some discussion regarding pair of textbooks, hardware, and those busing changes as well as if there was enough for funding for all the busing, and we're all trying to get some of that extra money, so why not finance for those buses, because we got those kids on. We also discussed our club advisor lists and pay levels, and we are referring that to the HR, and it's on their agenda for around night. We had a follow-up regarding the money handling procedures, and at the next meeting, there will be a procedural manual in place for that. Todd reported on our progress for our bond agreement, and we're hoping for it to go up. He tells me A+ is an unrealistic expectation, however, I think we should dream big. But who's going to be with those people on Monday? And we are waiting on our audit, which we all have a happy of that. And I'll be talking about that later.
Administrator reports. I used to like her from all of you.
Yeah, we're good.
Katie did mention before she left, she does have three teacher staff numbers out long-term right now, but all three positioned there currently, so it's not going to. But that was her contribution, if you wanted more, I'm going to get it working.
And you had center concerts, Mike went well, we're both there. And the high school concerts were last week?
Um, middle school choir was last night, high school, middle school band was last week, Thursday and Friday. Um, yeah, so yes, there are holiday ones are also on as well. We did test the, I didn't tell you this today, Brad, was finally able to do a text message test, so those of you who have kids in the district should have received the text message today, and then followed up with an email.
And he knows.
I followed up with an email, if you did not, where to check as far as what numbers are where. So we will be able to communicate with families that way. I think it will be very advantageous for things like snow days and things like that, where people don't always answer their phones because they don't know who it is and they don't check their email. So Ryan was a huge help in getting that finally. We've been paying for it, just not utilizing it. So that was nice to be able to do today.
Can board members?
So when staff members are on, staff members are on there, but that's not working yet for staff members, they have to get that set up, and then we have to fix the staff member number? I don't know, I, that would be a.
Wouldn't they come up as staff members, or is it staff?
They're very good. They do.
Yeah.
Just to have information, because we give out questions, I just, I'd rather have more information.
Yeah.
I'd have to go back to you.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Sorry, just for you. But yeah, so we did test that today, which was nice, and I know it worked because lots of people reached out that didn't get it, wanted to follow steps to get on itself.
Consent agenda, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Action items, we have one, and that would be a motion to consider establishing the teacher needs substitute grades. We've got that in our packets, what we are currently paying and what is being suggested that we move to. Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion to consider establishing the new daily teacher aid substitute grades as attached.
Second? Any discussion?
I will abstain, as I employ my teachers.
Any further questions on that or discussion? Could basically bring us up to the level of at least the East Troy District, which is close proximity to us. We start a little bit lower than some of the other districts, but we're smaller classroom sizes and nicer districts to work in, so I think there's something to be.
Is this coming out of the HR committee?
Yep.
I'm expecting. Coming from the work that Shelley did, presented, and then we passed it to Todd, and Todd renewed it and established.
And she had mentioned, what we discussed this in HR, that what we have been paying for teachers on call was what we paid when we very first started way back in college. So we have not increased, you know, that we paid since the very beginning.
Although we were the first, one of the first invaders, using the service of that. And it's been a successful service, it's just we need to.
I will, on a personal note, tell you, though, that I know at least one other regular student myself, we have received coaching numbers from surrounding school districts on a regular basis.
We received what?
Coaching. Like, they tried to get us, I received multiple calls, and I know a other person has as well. We love that district, but you know, sometimes it's tough.
It's just. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. District administrators or and business managers reports?
We have whoever the board was, was to delegate is, I have the information for that.
Tara?
Tara, you heard a little bit about IAB it tonight, again, it's something I'm pushing, and I think it's in perfect timing, especially for middle school. And that's, it's more of a structural approach under the curricular, set of curricula, and I think with a look at sports, I think this is the perfect place to just take a look at that, that work for us. And I think it will, I was on the national board, and I've heard, talked with superintendents from all over the US, who have time and similar demographics to watch. There were smaller districts with similar products, and everyone, there were there if I say, they said that the system is very successful. So looking forward to that, hopefully, I hope it's running late, might be early January before they get a chance to tour. It would probably bother the school in Washaw. And given this time of year, I'm not sure about productivity, but I think kids have all the things on their mind right now, so it may help to wait for them to get to work. And the other way of looking at it is that I've been talking to a couple of board members about tech ed program, and one of the things that I wanted to do at Washaw was start a diesel program, air operations and so on. But, and I had companies coming to me with, with information, but that totally did, and this guy shut down, of course. The next year that I was preparing for about two weeks, you really wasn't. So I do want to look at that, I mean, with a group of really successful tech ed teachers, tomorrow we'll talk about what that looked like, cost, those types of things. Yeah, I've not done, I've talked to Carrie about, and I've not done a survey here, because I want to make sure that we do it, I don't want to go out and ask students, "Hey, would you like this program?" And guess what, we can do it. Now, knowing that not a lot of technical teachers have diesel engine experience, what I'm looking at is a method we use in apple bridges called artisan residence or expert residence, where in this case, a mechanic might come in and work with it under supervision of a teacher. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a tech ed teacher, it could be another teacher, as long as that person is under supervision of a full-time teacher. Or it could be administrator. But in any of that, we're looking at that, and you know, we do have room over at El Ayre Elementary that might work perfectly for that, just a short block for students that don't want to be blocked. So I hope you have more on this next week, and if I need some idea, and I think there is funding out there, donations from various companies. I know at one point, Peterville, Washaw, the college boot, you know, let's go, help you, so. So that's, that's the goal at this point. I know given the maturity here, which does, you know, this is somewhat of a part of, I guess, is data, car, diesel equipment up there, but even if it's that, faring, right now, trucks and motor are pretty, especially for Christmas deliveries. So if you had the same luck I had, you'd probably be frustrated with Christmas act deliveries, but hopefully, this is one step in the right direction. So we will, I will be reporting on that. And then one final item is the, I think we just gave the first 10 pages of financial statements, because it's 62 pages, we'll give you a whole one once, once we get, once we get the, printed for the auditors. But just wanted to find out one thing, on the first page, we got unqualified opinion. Now, unqualified in the count of the world is a good thing. You think you want a really highly qualified opinion, but if you have a highly qualified opinion, you're trouble. But, so we did get an unqualified opinion, that means everything we're reviewing is correct. And then on page six, now, you know, at the bottom, at the very last line, we have two sets of fund balances, one is for a general fund, and that represents a fund balance around 34% of operating budget, that's, that's a good number, that's a pretty healthy number. For any district of any size, that's a good number. And then on the non-major funds, a lot of that is our fund. And then on the non-major funds, a lot of that is our fund eighty fund balance, which as we, as we work towards some of our programming that you're hopefully be able to use that for some plans that, yeah. I know Michael's working on developing fields, developing a, hopefully, an after-profit organization that can help with that. With that, with that kind of partnership, it makes the funding balance, funding accessible. So once we get those in place, we'll see if we can help. So that's it. There's a lot more good news in the financial statements. If you read it like I do, you may just want to keep it at those two numbers and realize we're definitely trending up both academically and financially. And when I say academically, I still, I, I, I still have questions on those, on those middle school state report cards, because it just, it's not, I don't know if it deserves some more digging into, but it just doesn't seem to make sense to me that, you know, you've got this great success at elementary, and there's a, there's a pandemic stop. So I, I, I just wonder how the state scored that this year. It might be, because I, I know that in Waukesha, we often, here's, so it's, it's a lot over the damn right now, but you know, it just, it just doesn't fit the way it should. So I, I talked to Carrie about this, she, I think she recognizes where she takes that. I don't know, just like I said, I, maybe once we look at, we see the whole, I see the whole picture of the community right now, I have, I have some questions. That's it.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions or anything? All right. Announcements and board comments. I just have one announcement. The local community group, once again, that's extremely supportive of our school, the FFIA alumni came in and met with Carrie and Brad and our new food service director and our ag teacher to look into putting in a new greenhouse with hydrotonics, and she's going to be working for maybe farm-to-table. The kids are all excited. There were the whole, like, there were ten agriculture students in the meeting, and just another thing, we look forward to something different for our district that's fantastic. And I think it's going to come back for the board maybe January or February. Or Buildings and Grounds. Rich was not able to be there, but it's, it's like just starting the ball rolling, and that FFA community chapter of alumni, they have money that they want to put into the district, do it to the building, and to the kids. So it's, it's a great thing. Who else have announcements?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I had a great conversation with the tech ed teacher, ask a foolies. It started out as a not-so-great conversation, but it turned into a really neat one as she was telling me about some of the things that she's been working on there. Carrie, do you happen to know how many kids she took with her over to Watertower?
Six. Four, four girls, three, two boys, I think. I think six ended up going with her.
So she's been working to get the district involved with this program called Skills USA, which is focused on trades and promoting the trades and competition, things like that. And she had tried to get...
Like DECA and FFA and all of that, just for, for tech ed?
She's been working, she, the kids are building this boat in the tech ed. And not just a model, like a three-person boat out in the lake with her robotics that they're building, so they contest in deep water, the robots that their kids are building. And she wanted to enter this into the Skills USA competition, but basically we're told it was too advanced a project to be judged with the other things that they were doing. But anyway, she, a long story short, she was able to take a group of her students over to Watertower, where they did have a competition last week, and got to show them some of the things that they're doing, and this is a program that she's working through, and to showcase and energize and get more interest in the, in the trades programs that she's offering there. So I just wanted to give her a shout out because I know she's been working really hard.
Once the welding booth are in, I'm hoping we can take a field trip, but they're, they're not in yet, so I was waiting for that to be done, and then hoping everybody could go and see kind of some of the things she's got going on. So I was hoping for a board monitoring once they're, once they're in. Now, it's just a big hole in the room right now, there's stuff in there.
And the diesel program makes me excited because one of my son's part-time jobs, he does have to school, and he works for a diesel mechanic down in North Columbus who is a PD graduate. And he just loves it, and he tells me all the time that he need to have programs that are useful and build life, like learning how to do mechanics and engine repair and stuff like that.
Okay, I'll, we'll be talking.
That's where it is daily. So, and the other thing I wanted to give a shout of, we had the Holiday Bazaar, and I had talked to so many people, like, I think the turnout was great. I talked to different clubs and organizations who like had record sales, the community support was amazing. I talked to a bunch of people that it was their first time coming to the Holiday Bazaar, and they were so impressed with everything. Got so many compliments from vendors that love coming here, one of their favorite bazaars because our students are so helpful in helping load and unload and set up, and just so much positive feedback. I was here all day for that, and it was just a really great turnout. The only complaint I had was that the boys don't, they don't have their cream cups.
Fifty-one years it's been going on.
That was the Cubs' go.
Oh, yeah, Cubs, Cubs, I'm sorry, Cubs' cups. So the boys don't...
Cream cups.
We, I remember for next year.
Slam the Cubs' cups.
Yeah. And then one last thing. Next week, make sure you please come and come attending the boys' basketball game on Monday. It's, it's great to see the boys, but shout out to the dance team, the middle school and high school dance teams are working this week to put together a little special Christmas performance that they'll be doing at halftime, and it should be a lot of fun to watch. They had a competition on Saturday, and fabulous, and we're very excited, so being a dance con, I have to, I have to give the girls a shout out because they're the work that they are, and they're so fun to watch, so it should be fun.
And to piggyback on that, this was ordered from the bizarre from the dance team, and she'll be there tonight, so.
And the dance team also got full-page front cover, colored coverage in the local paper for the middle school dance team to be at it, so they got a nice little shout out there. So it's always nice to see the kids who register on the front page with medals around their lap showing off that their homework's paying off. Shout out to the coaches for making that program even possible this year. It's been amazing, it's very cool.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to mention, while this isn't quite as exciting as the dance team or anything, but in our house, we thought it was pretty exciting. We got our tax bill and saw that the Palmyra Eagle School District tax on our tax bill went down twenty-one point six percent. So I think that we all deserve a little bit of that, but I think that we should see more chatter among them as well.
Thanks for the point. I don't want to see this. Well, on your sheet here is the upcoming meetings and events. PR, HR, CUP, Buildings and Grounds, Friday is the regular board meeting, and I'll now ask for a motion to return Zach. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned eight twenty-five.